11:00 AM, special meeting item, right?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brando, are you going to do the presentation?
Yep, if you're ready, Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and Council President, first, I want to thank you personally for allowing this to come on the agenda at such a late notice and working with me to make that happen. Totally, totally cool of you, and next year, as Council President, I'll certainly return the favor to all of our council members that feel like they have to hear something last minute. It's great that we have a Council President willing to work with us on that. I wanted to discuss an issue today, and I have a resolution, and the issue, thank you, Council President, and the issue is an Assembly Bill being put forth by Assemblyman Joaquina Ramula, and it is called Assembly Bill AB 3218. And he, this has just been pushed forward initially, about two weeks ago would be my guess, somewhere around two weeks ago, and I just learned about it then, began studying about it. I have, I had some, immediately, I had some very dramatic concerns. Now, some of those concerns have been allayed, but others are still very important to me. So I drafted a resolution, and in my six years, it's really the first time I've ever done a resolution that looks quite like this one. It's a resolution that both supports and could support or it could oppose Assembly Bill 3218. So there's language in my resolution. It's such a short resolution, I'm going to read it so that my colleagues can hear it. Very short, and it'd be probably shorter than me just rambling. So here goes. Whereas Assembly Bill 3218 seeks state money for funding ongoing operations and maintenance of recreational facilities along the San Joaquin River, and whereas Assembly Bill 3218 requires the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation to take all action, all necessary action to acquire lands and expand Millerton Lake State Recreation Area to include the San Joaquin River and approximately 5,900 acres adjacent to the river, and whereas there, and this is probably the important one for me, for discussion purposes, whereas there is the potential for unintended consequences of this proposed legislation and, quote, "taking all necessary actions may include exercising eminent domain of private property and may result in major impacts to local land authority and the jurisdiction of the San Joaquin River Conservancy and other local agencies." Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Fresno as follows. The Council supports AB 3218 if it provides only for the maintenance and operations of the San Joaquin River Parkway. Second point, the Council opposes AB 3218 if it authorizes the state to use eminent domain and/or exercise regulatory land use authority over the San Joaquin River Parkway. So I'm going to try and make some bullet points, and I know there's people in the audience that would like to address this as well. And also, I would like to add really quickly that I've spoken with staff from Assemblyman Ramula's office, the very great conversation, and they have really helped me get a long way in alleviating some of my fears. Here's what I love about Assemblyman Ramula's bill, that he is seeking money for operations and maintenance along the river bottom, and that's something that has been desperately needed for decades. The San Joaquin River Conservancy, which I sit on on your behalf, has the ability to purchase land and do capital projects, but very limited, meaning almost no ability to operate and maintain those projects. It's led to a lot of handcuffing of great projects. That's what I like about Assemblyman Ramula's bill, and if it was just that, I would be his biggest cheerleader. However, there is also language in the current draft, and we've been passed out something, and I don't know if that, that might be updated language, it would not surprise me, I know they've been working on that. However, there's other sentences in his bill which are really scary in some regard, and one of those is that it takes all necessary action to acquire lands and expand Millerton Lake State Recreation Area. As sitting on the Conservancy, and we went through a very dramatic vote this last year, we have a place at the table. This body has a place at the table. The City of Fresno has a seat at the table. The County of Fresno, the County of Madera, the City of Madera, the elected representatives of our citizenry has a seat at the table. There's language in the bill that makes me nervous that that could be taken away and those powers be transferred, transferred to the State Parks and Recreation Department in Sacramento. I believe and am worried about if that were to happen, that we would no longer have a seat at the table, but we'd be outside knocking on the window, trying to get attention rather than being a part of the discussion. Along with, I'm very worried, and I've been concerned about the power to eminent domain private property. It's my understanding of the 5,900 acres, about 2,000 of them are privately held. We have outstanding citizens in the City of Fresno, Cliff Tutellian's an example, Stan Spano's example, many others are owned property that have been in contract for a long time, and we have to deal with them as real people. They've owned land for a long time, and they have desires for that land, and we have to enter into negotiations with them, and I believe that's fair process. That's what we've been doing for many years, is dealing with people who own land. The Conservancy does that. Most of the times, the Conservancy is able to acquire the land that they want, not all the time, most of the times. I don't, I am very concerned that the powers of the Conservancy, which really means local control, would be shifted to Sacramento. So I've had eminent domain concerns and where the end power will reside once Assemblyman Ramula's bill has been concluded. Now, this is going to go to a subcommittee, they could modify it. I feel it's important to send that subcommittee and all parties involved, interested parties, they should know that we could either both support this bill in its purest, simplest, best form, but if it transfers power, I believe that my recommendation is that we would oppose this bill. So my resolution contains option, opportunities of support and opposition. It's not a resolution of opposition, it's a resolution stating that if it's about money to, for operations and maintenance, we're very supportive, and I've sent the message to Assemblyman Joaquina Ramula's office. If that's what it is, I will lock arms with him and be very supportive, okay? But if it moves the other direction, moves local land use issues away from local control, I'm going to be very opposed. And so, I'm going to make a motion to adopt my resolution today.
So there's a motion and a second. So we're going to go ahead and go out to the public, but I want to first recognize Anna Melendez from Assemblymember Ramula's office, and she can come. I know that we've been in conversation about the bill over the last 24 hours, and she can provide some context and then just updates. I know that we get concerned about legislative proposals, and I, as I spoke to you, Councilmember Brando, when you asked me to put this on the agenda, I also noted, because I'm familiar with the legislative process in Sacramento, that it was a mere introduction and that they were trying to get legislative language to amend a certain section of the proposal. And it, the process is pretty lengthy, so there's various committees, so it is great that this body can take some action to, you know, state our position, but I think that it's fair to listen to what Dr. Ramula's office has an update for us and just to provide some context about what they're doing.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to present and maybe clarify a little bit about AB 3218.
And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, so, name is Anna Havel Melendez, and address is 2162 East Cromwell, Fresno, 93720, and today I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Joaquina Ramula, and I do have a statement to read on his behalf. He is in Sacramento this morning as the Assembly is in session. So this is, again, the statement of Assemblymember Joaquina Ramula on AB 3218. It is no secret the San Joaquin Valley is severely underserved and often forgotten about. Compared to the rest of the state, we lack in the number of parks available for our community to use, and as a physician, I know the importance of spending time outdoors. Millerton Lake is the only state recreational area in Fresno, Madera, Teleri, and Kings Counties. We are lucky enough to have the San Joaquin River right in our backyard, which could provide many opportunities for outdoor recreational activities. The idea to make the San Joaquin River a state park is not new. In 2009, a report issued by this California State Parks Department called for partnering with the San Joaquin River Conservancy to establish a new park with campsites, picnic sites, boating facilities, and interpretive services. AB 3218 is an attempt to make this a reality. The intent behind the bill is to identify a source and agency that can provide operation and maintenance for the San Joaquin River Parkway. For 26 years, the San Joaquin River Conservancy has tried to achieve the goal of a continuous river parkway, but has been unable to provide enough O&amp;M to allow the public to fully appreciate its recreational opportunities. Although I don't believe eminent domain is possible under AB 3218, and have been advised by Legislative Council that nothing in this bill gives eminent domain authority, I am working with Legislative Council on clarifying amendments that will clarify that the state would designate authority to state parks over the current existing property already within the Parkway Conservancy's portfolio, and that the purchase of new land for the purpose of one continuous river parkway would be written into the parks plan and fall under the existing authority of the Conservancy. The goal of this bill is to help with the mission to one day have a continuous river parkway that has sufficient operations and maintenance funding. As always, I look for solutions wherever possible, and I believe that the key to securing O&amp;M is through the State Parks Department. AB 3218 is an opportunity for the state to help address the long-term challenges of ongoing operation and maintenance of the San Joaquin River and help us increase park space in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brando, did you have some questions you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Anna, thank you, and thank you for the conversation yesterday. You've really helped me, and I appreciate that you're saying today that eminent domain is not a part of what you're trying, of what Assemblyman Ramula's trying to accomplish here. And you've been working on modifying language, we talked about that a little bit yesterday. Has it, has it been modified at this point, or is it still being worked on, or?
Correct. So we have been working with Legislative Council to amend the original bill language that was introduced. We have gotten some amendments as of this morning, but are continuing to work on the language of the bill itself to allay whatever concerns the city and the local authorities may have.
Well, it sounds like you're going to clarify the part about eminent domain, and that would be very appreciated if the final language clarifies that for those of us that are a little worried about the initial language. And so I do appreciate it, I appreciate our conversation yesterday. Council President, we've also got a couple of members of the Board of Supervisors, they faced this same conversation on Tuesday, and I'd like for them to be able to.
Yes, I have them on the list, they're next on the list, so if we need you for additional questions or comments, we will, I will call you up, Anna, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I have Supervisor Nathan Magzig. Welcome, and nice to see you here.
Likewise, thank you, Council President and Council Members. So on Tuesday of this week, the Board of Supervisors also took a look at this particular bill, and we had some observations and unanimously voted to send a letter to the Assemblymember. And in this case, looking at the bill, I do recognize as a former staffer myself, working in Sacramento, that bills, when they're first introduced, many times, most of the time, continue to change until it's time for them to go for floor votes. And so, for us at the Board of Supervisors, some concerns that we had initially with this bill as it was introduced is, it was the first that we had heard about it. So, you know, typically, we like to work with our legislators in creating legislation, but what the Assemblymember is attempting to do with trying to find operations and maintenance funding to maintain the park, I think is commendable. Some concerns that we noted in the letter that we sent to Sacramento is, we want to make sure that local control is not taken away in regards to the, to the Parkway itself. Looking at Lost Lake Park, Lost Lake Park is in my district, it's a couple hundred acres, it's right, it's right below Millerton Dam, right along the river, and looking at the language of the bill, it's unclear if Lost Lake Park may be swept into some type of state park system, and the county then would lose its opportunity to maintain that park. And we have just got done spending about a five-year period of time revitalizing 84 acres of that park. So there's a lot of questions that we have, but mainly making sure that local control is, is maintained is critical. So we sent a letter, and I think that letter's been provided to the City of Fresno as well. And I think it's important for all of us to speak with one voice as a county, as the City of Fresno and the County of Madera, just to make sure that as this bill works its way through the process and gets assigned to different committees, that the bill is retooled in such a way that it's workable for all of us. So at the end of the day, the County Board of Supervisors did not take a specific opposed position to the bill, but we did state what our concerns were, and to the extent that this bill can be retooled, maintains that local control, you know, we're fully supportive and appreciate all the efforts of the Assemblymember Joaquina Ramula. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Andrea Borges. Nice to see you as well.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues from the city. Andreas Borges, Fresno County, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think most everything that needs to be said has been said. Let me point out a few nuances to support what Supervisor Magzig mentioned and earlier, Councilmember Brando. Intent only goes so far, and I think we are all very supportive of Dr. Ramula's intent to, to get O&amp;M funding. As the former chairman of the Conservancy for two years, this has been the Achilles heel, if you will, of the Conservancy, so much so that it has become a discussion point with the city leadership about trying to find money for O&amp;M, also with the county, and even discussions about a ballot issue that may be on November's ballot for O&amp;M. We still don't know about that yet, but, so that is top of mind. But I think what I want to impress upon you, if you don't know already, is the idea that if we have these concerns, that they be articulated and incorporated into the legislation itself. That is why I think the Board took its action. We certainly do not want to have the powers of eminent domain, bless you, on the table. But it's beyond eminent domain. It's also the sanctity and sovereignty of local control, the city, the county, and in particular, the Conservancy. So if we, if the intention is only O&amp;M, and land use authority is intended to remain with the local authorities, the Conservancy, the city, and the county, then let's write that into the bill, making very certain that we are not divesting our local control in favor of the state. If that is the case, I would certainly support this, this effort, and I would join with Member Brando, and maybe even President Soria, and members of the Board in supporting the bill itself. But we all know, the Sacramento legislative process can start in one fashion, in character, modify, and even Frankenstein along the way. That is my biggest concern. So if we're truly serious about crafting the best legislation, then it will have provisions in there, not only to eliminate the threat of eminent domain, but clear articulation that the City of Fresno and other related entities maintain their land use authority. So in essence, the State of California would be graciously providing O&amp;M funding, but that is it. That would be the ideal situation, and because no one can answer that question, that is why I think all of the antennae are up. So as you move forward in deliberating this resolution, I appreciate the time that you've taken, and just so we're clear, we are both, we are supportive, but with concerns. And if those concerns are addressed, we can all lock arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Brin?
Good morning, everyone, hi. My name is Brin Forehand. I happen to be the Citizen Representative for the City of Fresno on the San Joaquin River Conservancy. I am not here representing the Conservancy, I'm here representing me, and the reason why is, in an earlier life, other than having served on the San Joaquin River Conservancy for the past 15, 16 years in that capacity, and I appreciate that, because many of you have supported my involvement on that. In a previous life, and I even hate to say, 25 years ago, I was a legislative staffer, and I was involved in the process in terms of getting the Conservancy Act worked on. And so, my colleague, Councilmember Brando, I certainly can appreciate what your concerns are. I went through this process, having then worked for Assemblyman Jim Costa the 25, 26 years ago, when this was all begun with the Conservancy, and I can truly tell you, having sat at the table, having been involved, the issue of local control and eminent domain was absolutely important in that deliberation, and as you know, that is the result that we have today. And so I want to hold out to you that that deliberative process, that collaboration that was convened at that time with all interested parties, the City of Fresno, the County of Fresno, and the County of Madera, and also the Parkway Trust and other groups, and private landowners as well, we all came together for that Conservancy Act. And so I just want to echo the comments made by the members of the Board of Supervisors, both Supervisor Magzig and Borges, in that we need to weigh in on this, discuss it, but I really want us to take a step back and not pull the, pull the pin out of the grenade to oppose it outright. I think that Councilmember President Soria pointed out, this is a process, it's just the beginning, it's a spot bill, we're hearing from Ramula's staff, the changes are coming. I would suggest there would be a convening of a group of all of the interested parties here from the various local agencies to hash these things out with the Assemblymember and his staff as we move forward, because we do not want to lose sight on the goal, which is so important here, is the funding for operations and maintenance for the Conservancy, because we all know, public access to those properties and to that river is what's absolutely paramount in this situation. We have to keep that goal in mind, and knowing full well that tens of millions of dollars of public monies have been spent to act, to acquire those properties, it is so dependent upon us as those involved in this process to do everything we can to find a funding stream, an O&amp;M situation, to be able to fund that. So I just want to make sure we're calm in this process, I hear you loud and clear, I think others hear you, but we need to be deliberating, conversing, sharing information, and then moving forward. And I really believe that you, Councilmember Brando, and the members of this body are interested in seeing that happen, and I believe the County of Fresno is moving, believes that as well, as well as the County of Madera. So let's not trip up ourselves at this point, let's keep focused on what the goal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will call up Denise, I know she is representing Congressman Jim Costa, and I, a few minutes ago, I passed a letter that we just received from Congressman Jim Costa, and as mentioned by Brin, he was one of the persons, when he was in the Assembly, that worked on this issue as well.
Yes, like Council President said, my name is Denise, and I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Congressman Costa. Today I write to you regarding a resolution before the City Council concerning Assembly Bill 3218, legislation that seeks to address the longstanding challenge of funding ongoing operations and maintenance of the San Joaquin River Parkway. When the San Joaquin River Conservancy was created in 1992, I worked very closely over a period of seven years in a collaborative effort with the City of Fresno and the Counties of Fresno and Madera to ensure that these local agencies would play a pivotal role in the creation of the Parkway, with portions on the Conservancy Board along with other local and state agencies. The purpose of the Conservancy was to promote the Parkway and coordinate efforts and mediate differences among the local jurisdictions and the state. I believe that Assemblymember Ramula intends for his legislation to be consistent with these long-established collaborative traditions. Parks, playgrounds, greenways, trails, and community open spaces help keep Americans and their communities fit and healthy. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Profession, only 25% of Americans adults achieve recommended results of daily physical activity, which contributes to increased obesity and obesity-related diseases like high blood pressure, diabetes, congestive heart failure, and stroke. As one solution to the increased incidence of obesity, the CDC has called for more parks and playgrounds. Studies have shown that when people have open space to recreate in, they exercise more. The San Joaquin Valley has less park space than comparable regions of California, and the lack of green space negatively impacts the opportunities for our friends and neighbors to recreate outdoors and in ways that contribute to the vitality of our communities. The most critical challenge facing the San Joaquin River Parkway is the ongoing operations and maintenance costs, which have an estimated to be between seven to six and seven million dollars annually. The Conservancy has had sufficient bond funding for the acquisition of properties to assemble the Parkway, but not the necessary funding to fulfill its responsibilities to operate and manage the Parkway. This is absolutely imperative in order to enable the public to access the Parkway. We have an obligation and therefore a challenge to provide an ongoing long-term funding stream for the lands that have been acquired as part of the Conservancy and land that will be acquired from willing sellers. There are three concepts that have been discussed over the years to address this ongoing operations and maintenance challenge. Number one, form a joint powers authority between the City of Fresno and the Counties of Madera in Fresno. Number two, create a special district with an assessment fee to raise the necessary O&amp;M capital. And number three, expand the state park at Millerton and include the Parkway land and future lands acquired from the willing sellers. Given the demands already placed on local government from deferred maintenance of the existing park system to outstanding pension obligations, it seems clear the third option of pursuing an ongoing partnership with the State of California would be a critical element to achieving the Parkway's mission. As the author of the legislation that created
Go ahead.
The San Joaquin River Conservancy, I'm willing to sit down with Assemblymember Ramula, city officials, city councils, and local stakeholders to address this longstanding O&amp;M challenge. I commend Assemblymember Ramula for introducing legislation to solve this problem, and urge him to continue to work collaboratively with all parties to find a constructive solution. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments, and I look forward to continuing to work with you all. Sincerely, Jim Costa.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dice. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, thanks, Council President, and just a couple notes of observation, I mentioned this to my colleague, Councilmember Brando, and I may ask Anna to just, if you could come down, I want to make sure, and I shared this, that we aren't sending something that ultimately potentially could weaken our Assemblymember's role in this negotiation process. I do understand it's early in the legislative process, and I have an idea of how these things work, not nearly as much as you do, but is, is this, does this action help the cause of what Council, Councilmember, Assemblymember Ramula's trying to do?
I think that we definitely understand the concerns of the local elected officials and local authorities, absolutely, and as we, I spoke with a couple of our elected officials yesterday and over the past couple of weeks, as well as with the original author, Jim Costa, about his original intent as well. I believe that we'd like to reiterate that this bill is continuing to change. We continue to make amendments to it, and we are still awaiting a hearing date for it to be assigned and heard in the committee, rather, the committee to which it is assigned, which is Water, Parks, and Wildlife. This is an evolving process. Perhaps it would be best to just reiterate to you that, that this is evolving, right? So actions that are taken are taken perhaps with insufficient information. I would hesitate for actions to be taken without being fully, without you being fully aware of the information and what we're currently trying to do. As I mentioned, we are currently working through amendments and amending, amending the actual bill. When it is heard in policy committee, a lot of other questions will come up, and subsequently it'll also be assigned to appropriations where the fiscal impact of what will be needed will be heard as well.
Okay, so, forgive me, but is, does our action today help the Assemblymembers' efforts in negotiating the bill? Does, does this in any way help that effort?
The resolution, as I understand it, is a two-part resolution. The resolution, as I understand it, is a two-part resolution. I'm not sure that I would advise voting on a resolution today, for fear that, because it's two parts, it will inadvertently send a message that we won't be able to clarify. I don't want to speak on behalf of the city, obviously, but I would just advise that because the bill continues to change and be amended, that perhaps not taking a vote on the resolution today, you might want to consider delaying the resolution vote itself.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Thank you. And so, my only issue, Councilmember Brandow, is, you know, we have a relatively strong voice in, in the state Capitol, and I know Dr. Arambula is, he's doing a really good job, a lot of things done for us here, and I would, part of that, I think, is, I think people in the state Capitol know that his community supports him and his efforts, and I'm a little unclear on if this would potentially hurt that, and hurt his standing in the negotiating effort. And I think, I think that you've reiterated that he's, that things are evolving, and I listened to both Supervisors Maxig and Borges, and as well as Anna, and even Bren beforehand, it sounds like this process is ongoing. I would just hate for us to inadvertently do something that could hurt that. So, I'm going to listen to my colleagues a little bit, but I don't want to take an action today that's going to hurt our Assemblymember in the state Capitol. I want to make sure that what we're doing here is aligned with what he's trying to get done, and I'm all for making sure that we reiterate our concerns to him. If that resolution said concerning, or supporting Assembly Bill 318, 3218, I know you can't make that change today, I appreciate that. And I think my alarm, you know, came initially because the title says opposing Assembly Bill 3218, and I know you're going to clarify that on the record.
And I'd like to do that right now, if I could.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead.
Because in, I believe that is on, when it got added to the agenda, the word opposing is in there. However, if you look at the document itself, the resolution itself, the very first case is support, and it uses the word support, and I've made that clear this morning, but sometimes in these very sticky situations, you have to go over the top to make it clear. So, I consider this, as the bill is in flux, I think that's the perfect time for us to let our voice be made known, okay? Not after the case. I think it's very perfect for us to say to our colleagues in Sacramento that we can easily support this, and if, through the different iterations that may come of this bill, it ends up being about operations and maintenance money, I consider this resolution to already be a resolution of support, if that's the pathway chosen. So, Councilman Baines, I definitely want to make sure that anybody who read the, the part where it got added to today's agenda, might see the word opposing. I have never once considered this a resolution opposing. This isn't about opposing, it's about communicating. And so, I think now's the time to do that communicating.
And I can appreciate that, and you're right, there are strategic times of communication. I totally agree with that, and this definitely, as the bill is making its way through committee and eventually coming out, is the time to actually communicate that. I think the, the only thing that I wanted to make sure of, and make sure you, you know, heard my concern was, one, obviously the way it's titled, and I appreciate you clearing that up. The other thing is whether or not our communication is, is helpful in us ultimately getting what we want or not, and I know it's a, I haven't got a clear answer on that yet exactly, but I'll listen to my colleagues and I'll kind of wait to hear more dialogue.
Great, thank you. So, next I have Councilmember Chavez, and then Councilmember Capriolio, and then Councilmember Olivier.
All right. So, it's no secret that Central Valley always gets left behind out of the pot of funding up in Sacramento, and there's a very simple reason for that, because we are vastly outnumbered by legislators in Southern California and Northern California. I've been personally in those meetings, I know how that happens, and the last thing we want to do is shoot our legislator in the foot, because when, when they get something and they don't see support locally, it basically makes it easy for them to say no to, to the conversation about allocation. So, I'm not going to go on, because I think everybody made some really good points, but I've got two, two options for Councilmember Brandow, if you're open to this, because I heard the concerns that you had, that our colleagues over at the county had. Would you be agreeable to changing the language to, so that it would read, "Supporting operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control"? Would you be agreeable to have that?
And that would be the title, is what you're suggesting?
Correct. Rather than opposing AB.
Talking about up at the very top of my resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Supporting
Operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control.
While maintaining local control.
That's, that's one option. The other option I was going to float is what our colleagues over at the county did, which was send a letter outlining the support, the parts we support, the parts we have reservations or control, or we would like to see modified, included into the language, signed by, by the council with regards to that.
Whoever wants to say.
Sure.
So, I think that hearing, hearing Councilman Chavez, and then earlier, Councilman Baines, you guys are a little concerned about that this might be branded as opposition only, and although I don't believe it is, and I don't believe the body of the resolution's very clear, that it can be supportive if one pathway is chosen, or opposed, if, as long as that language is there.
Point of order, Member Brandow, point of order. If, if I may, Council President, at the League of California Cities on that board, we, we sometimes vote to support legislation going through Sacramento, we sometimes vote to say no to that legislation, sometimes we just vote to monitor or watch. Maybe that could be part of this as well, I mean, it's, maybe your item could be, just to maintain the text of the item, but the title of it could be to monitor, and just to, just to let folks in Sacramento know that this body and this organization is very closely, and that's what we do at the League, maybe that could help resolve a little bit of the confusion between, do we condemn it, do we support it, or maybe we could get a 7-0 to monitor this, and send a message to people in Sacramento that, that our eyes are on them. And as it unfolds, there we go, we have a 7-0, we're speaking in a unified voice, and we're monitoring this piece of legislation. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Brandow.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Councilman Olivier, so, real quickly, I think that more, we're not just a monitoring body, I think that we need to, we're a body of voice, so I think we have to express our voice. I am, however, willing to revisit what Councilman Chavez asked me in the, in the title of the resolution, so let's go back to that for a minute, Councilman. Supporting Assembly Bill 3218 if local control is maintained?
Support, supporting operation and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control.
While maintaining local control, and then if you, if you, if you need me to build that into the title, and then can I add to that in denying eminent domain powers?
Sure.
Okay. Then I, then I'm willing, then I'm willing to make those changes to help you folks understand that, that that's really my intent anyway, so if that helps to put that in the title.
Perfect. So, next we have Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. It seems to me that the Sacramento leaders don't have privy to this type of conversation and concerns that we have as a body for our citizenry in the city and the county of Fresno. And I don't know how to convey that to them in a, in a tactful way. I can see them looking at this, or listening to this, or reading this, and easily taking a negative tone, I really think that. And rather than delay, or obstruct, or have some interference with Dr. Arambula's hard work, I think we, I really would support a letter similar to what the county wrote, so that would serve our purpose of conveying a message, it would serve our purpose of us staying unified as a Central Valley community. So, I think the letter thing would, would be an option that you might want to consider, Member Brandow, just, that would kind of serve all the purposes. It would let them know we're monitoring, and let them know that we are ready to do a resolution if the push comes to shove, and we can save that resolution as our ace, if you will, for a later play, if things don't turn out as our educated colleagues here who have been to Sacramento and have seen how the process works, it would be a way to, to take care of both ends of the, of the concern and problem here.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Capriolio, and, you know, I just want to add to your comments, I think that that is a great suggestion. I think that in the spirit of attempting to speak in a unifying voice and saying that this body does support the attempts by our Assemblymember, because I think that the intent is the O and M issue, and this body previously, and the body across the street in terms of the county and other folks that have been involved, have been talking about this issue for far too long, and what I want to do, I want to like applaud my Assemblymember, I'm very proud that he represents me, because I applaud him in charging forward and continuing the hard work that Congressman Jim Costa started back when he was an Assemblymember. And if, if it's someone from the Central Valley that represents us at the state level that can get it done, I will say it's Dr. Arambula can get it done, because we know at the end of the day, in terms of the politics and the leverage that we have, and if we want to draw those dollars here to our community, I think that this body needs to say in a unified voice, yes, we support your efforts, and we can do it through a letter, and then once we get to a place where the bill is much more ripe, and it's going through, as we're monitoring, then we can come back with a resolution to state our final position. But I think that we can send that message through, through the letter, so I don't know if there's, if there's a motion, but I will make a motion.
What's your preference, Councilmember Brandow? What's your preference?
I think the Board of Supervisors might speak in letter form a lot more often than we do, we speak mostly in resolution form. So, I had a conversation with a city attorney kind of about that, leading up to this, and we really express our, we express our support and opposition to different things through resolution form, so, I mean, that's normally, I think most of you, my colleagues, have done these type of things in the past, to let our voice be known, so I prefer just to speak in a resolution form, and I've made great changes, and I've addressed concerns, and so I think you guys can see where I'm really at on this, and I really believe, I absolutely believe what Council President just said. I also would, will applaud Joaquin, I applaud him just for getting involved in operations and maintenance money for, for this, and if it continues like that, I give you my word, you'll see me as his biggest cheerleader, as I was when he brought a million dollars to the Pavarillo House. I walked up to him and told him that was fantastic work, okay? And so, but my concerns are still in the current language that's in his current bill, okay? So, I think we express ourself through resolution form, and now I've changed even the title, so I would be, I don't believe this is a letter of opposition, I think it's, I don't believe it's a resolution of opposition, I believe it's a resolution expressing our voice, and so, that, I want to, I would like to
So, just so we're clear, so, then you're okay with changing the title to "Supporting operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control"? You were okay, you were comfortable with that?
Yes, yes, while maintaining local control.
And, and striking eminent domain?
And denying the powers of eminent domain.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Olivier.
Okay, thank you. Steve, I don't, I don't, I want to support this, I wanted to support it when I came forward, but through this discussion, it's losing me. We've heard three or four times from the people in this room that it's going to change, and it's going to change, and it's going to change, we don't know the language. I was told through the rumor mill that the eminent domain was coming out, we just heard from staff that the eminent domain is not yet out. I believe the quote was, "Actions are taken without sufficient information in Sacramento." We don't have a hearing date, we don't, we don't know anything about this, and I think somebody, I think it was Supervisor Borges, that mentioned that the, the things in Sacramento tend to change, and then Frankenstein. I'm not going to vote to support something that doesn't have a hearing date that could Frankenstein. If, if they came and the statement from our Assemblymember said, "I reject eminent domain", and it won't be a part of this, I'd be willing to support. But what, what we're here is, we're at a, we're listening to an agenda item that wasn't brought forward by our Assemblyman's office. This was brought forward by the Councilman whose district will be affected, because he wasn't consulted ahead of time. And when we, when we bring things forward at city, or county, or at the state, we do a rollout. We do a rollout where we consult with the, the right folks, right, to get the information that we need, we go to the key stakeholders in our community, we communicate with, with the people who, who need to be communicated with, so that way we have a, the, the community knows what's coming forward. In this case, we have a piece of legislation that's coming forward without a hearing date, without language, and, and none of the locals were ever consulted. The rollout has been bungled, and I'm happy to call my Assemblymember, Dr. Arambula, out for, for a bad rollout, just like I would call Assemblymember Jim Patterson out, who's, who's from my party, for a bungled rollout. So, I think it's too premature to, to take a position on, on a nebulous ether of legislation that has been bungled badly in its introduction to the community, and I think that I want to see a more solid piece of legislation, I want to see a piece of legislation that doesn't contain eminent domain before I'm going to take a position on this, and it's, I mean, it's not because I don't think that the work that you have done is, is, is good, I appreciate what you've done, I, I've supported you from the beginning on this, but I mean, now it's changed, and now it's, it's, now it's a support, and we're putting stuff in, and we're taking stuff out, and now we're all pledging allegiance to our state lawmakers, I think that what we need to do is hold our state lawmakers accountable, so unfortunately, I won't be able to support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
And for the record, I think Councilmember Olivier had previously said that he would not be weighing in on state legislation, so.
I don't want to qualify that, I don't like to vote on things that, we cherry pick, you know, Bob Smith from Anaheim's legislation because we like it, I don't believe that it's worth the taxpayers' time to have, have a debate on that, but this was brought forward by one of our council colleagues in an attempt to hold the state legislature accountable, so I think absolutely I should, I should, we should all weigh in on this, but I, I think that it's, it's important to cast more of a, a critical eye on this before moving forward and pledging our organization to supporting something that could be completely different once it gets out of, of committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you again. And, Member Brandow, you really brought forward this at a very appropriate time, I think, and a very appropriate issue before the council today, and I think, I think, I think, anyway, I think we can, I think the message, we've had all the key players in the room, and I know they're listening to this, their staff is here, and I think they hear us loud and clear. I, I think this discussion, and all the things we've put on the table, and I know you're going to, you'll be texting him in 10 minutes, if we can finish in 10 minutes, but I think the message has been delivered loud and clear, and I think we've made the point, and I thank my colleague for bringing all this forward and putting it on the table, so there's no, no question, no doubt, no question, no, no way you could understand how we feel about this, so I think you did your job, I think it's on the table. And I wanted to call Member Maxig up if he would, or Supervisor, excuse me, we're just members, you are a Supervisor.
I am, I'm your humble servant, sir.
You are, we are, we share
How may I serve you?
Yeah, we share territory, absolutely.
Listening, I just have some thoughts, so it is true that, yes, the Board of Supervisors issued a letter, and in the letter, we identified some things that we would like to see in the legislation, and hearing from Member Brandow, I recognize that the city speaks in resolution, so maybe a suggestion that I would have is a resolution which maybe wouldn't say if you're going to support or oppose the legislation, but a resolution which identifies the tenants that are most important to the city of Fresno. So, lay out that in this bill, you want to see these things, and if those appear in the bill, then obviously, a resolution
the bill, then obviously a resolution, another resolution would follow from the city of Fresno supporting this particular bill. That way it's clear, and you're on the record in writing as a city, that these are the things that you want to see in the bill. I know with the letter that the county of Fresno issued, that was my individual goal, and all five board members signed on to that particular letter. So if that's something that maybe would almost be like splitting the baby, so to speak, because we are at the front end of this process, at least the city of Fresno would go on record stating that you do want local control, eminent domain needs to be out of the, out of the bill, operation and maintenance are things that are very important. So that is just a suggestion. I think if this bill does morph into something that is going to be damaging to our community, at least as we see it, then I think we could have another discussion as a county and a city, and the county of Madera, about maybe doing a joint resolution at that point, because I do believe we need to be clear in our messaging, and we are stronger when we speak with one voice. But we are at the front end of this, and I do take Assemblymember Joaquin Ramula at his word, and that this is something to help benefit all of us, and so with that, I would just maybe provide some suggested language to him in the form of a resolution, and ask that that be incorporated into the bill, and maybe that can help allay concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to be fair, Supervisor Borges, do you have a comment or two you'd like to add to the conversation?
I think just to be brief, on it, Member Maxig identified what we did at the county, which was to articulate that we had concerns about eminent domain, we had concerns about land use authority, about the maintenance of the sovereignty of the Conservancy, and not being subordinated to the state. Those are four of the issues that I care about most. And the idea that we, that we should wait until later in the process to let our voices be heard is how we get into trouble legislatively. It is better to have a more comprehensive and more sustainable piece of legislation at the outset than to try to modify it halfway through, once it's passed committee. So I think, as you deliberate today on whether you do a resolution, I'm not necessarily advocating that you have to do a resolution or you have to do a letter. That's up for you to decide today. But we are all on the same page, almost intuitively, and I think we do need to hear from the city of Fresno on this issue, because we're going to bring it to the Conservancy, and then we're going to go to the county of Madera as well, so that Sacramento respects the position of our regional authorities. For Fresno to not weigh in on what it wishes to have, I think would be problematic, and I think you have all the information that you need today to form an opinion that you're supportive, but conditioned on the following, if that answers your question, or.
It does, but I want to put you on the spot. So you, it seems to me that we do speak often in letters and resolutions and so forth, but for consistency's sake and unification of all of us, would a letter be your preference? The message, I think we all got the message, I like your four points, those are really good. So if it's in a letter form or a resolution, do you think either/or would be sufficient?
I think either one would be fine. The reason why I drafted that letter at the county is because we wanted to be very clear, just as President Soria and Member Baines had identified, we don't want to send the wrong message. And so I think the letter from the county was a nuanced way of putting out a more comprehensive message than bullet points by virtue of resolution. So it was more nuanced. But I think now that the table's been set, we just need to have more support put on that table for the more meaningful discussions with the Assemblyman's Office and the others that are relevant on the, on the committee. So I'll leave that up to you, but I would, I would certainly encourage action today, because it's easier to craft legislation at the outset than to modify it through the process.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So what I'm hearing is, are we sending a message, or are we sending a mandate? And I think at this point, a message would be better, and the subtle message, which is so subtle, is we're sort of mandating this, and I think the representative here has that loud and clear. With that in mind, I think it'd be better to be consistent and send a letter with those bullet points and the things you want as well, Member Brandow, rather than a resolution. So I would, I would support a message slash letter at this time.
Councilmember Baines.
Did you want to add something? Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, and who was your second? Clint, you were his second. So you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Okay, so Councilmember Chavez makes that second, so.
I want to see the language first. I understand the point of whoever, Supervisor Borges, I understand.
The language is, the language is published.
And I want to, I want to move further in this process before, at the.
It is, it is public.
Okay, perfect. So we do have a motion and a second? So, perfect. No further comment?
You're still up? No, you're good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. Is there any opposition to the amended motion, which was to take the.